All right, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. I'd like to call the City of Delafield Council Meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you could help us with roll call, please?
Like the first time I've used the microphones apparently tonight. All right, other person Henry?
Here.
Other person Schaefer?
Here.
Other person Vailli?
Here.
Other person Dean?
Here.
Other person Grimmer?
Here.
Other person Price?
Here.
Other person Iker?
Here.
Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner?
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to Item 4, Special Order of Business A. Special recognition of retiring Police Chief Eric Keel for his nearly 25 years of distinguished public service to the City of Delafield. A1, reading and approval of the official proclamation in recognition of the public service of Chief of Police Eric Keel. Whereas Eric Keel has served the public as a sworn officer for over 28 years since August 12, 1994, and whereas Eric Keel was hired as a police officer for the City of Delafield on June 1, 1998, and has publicly served the City of Delafield's citizens, schools, and business community for nearly 25 years, and whereas Eric Keel was promoted to the position of Lieutenant in 2002, Captain on September 29, 2011, and was appointed as the Chief of Police on February 3, 2014, and whereas Eric's leadership as Chief of Police, the City of Delafield Police Department became the first in Waukesha County to implement body cameras, among the first to adopt the lethality assessment program, thank you, for domestic violence victims. First in the state of Wisconsin to adopt Cortico Officer Wellness Application, first and only department in the state of Wisconsin to partner in the Live Today, put-it-away suicide prevention program. I guess I should know these ones better than I do. Created the department's first detective position and handled multiple critical incidents. And whereas on 2017, Eric received the department's valor award for acting on behalf of the department and engaging in contact directed at the protection of life or bodily security of another in the face of high risk and body harm or death, and in the manner that exemplified courage and the highest level of professionalism. And whereas, as Chief of Police, Eric has operated the city police department in an efficient, orderly, and trustworthy manner, and has led to the department's efforts to effectively maintain law and order and protect the rights of the citizens of Delafield under the Constitution. And whereas, Eric has announced his plan to retire effective March 31, 2023. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the common council of the City of Delafield, that we commend Eric Keel on his achievements, extend our sincerest gratitude for his distinguished public service, and wish him and his wife Kelly a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Proclaim this 20th day of February 23.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All those words absolutely true, based on everything I've ever seen with you. Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to A2, Presentation by Representative of the 99th Wisconsin Assembly District. Oops, I missed something? Oh, we do. Okay, need a motion to approve it.
I also move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions passes. Thank you very much, Molly. There we go. Now we're on to where we are moving to. Number 2, Presentation of Representative of the 99th Wisconsin State Assembly District Cindy Dukow honoring Chief of Police Eric Keel for his many years of dedicated service to the City of Delafield and surrounding communities. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I've worked with Eric for a number of years. I'm going to tell you, it's just been absolutely...
For the microphone.
And I get around, oh, do I think I need a microphone? Really?
For the TV.
Okay. I got it. So I get around to most of Waukesha County, and I deal a lot with Milwaukee Police Department. And I was just telling Eric that they have 200 vacancies in Milwaukee right now, and I don't know when they think they're going to be able to fill those. So when we have good people like Eric and the rest of the officers that I work with here in Delafield and Heartland and Puywalki, we're really, really lucky. And you never think about what they do until you need them, and hopefully, none of us ever need them. But when you do, these guys show up and they're amazing. And we've been very blessed to have a wonderful team. I know we're going to have a wonderful team when you go. But what you guys put up with is a lot, and I don't think people realize that. I did a ride along with Waukesha, and I got in the car, and we were in there 10 minutes, and we had a GSW. And I'm like, okay, this is going to be an exciting day. So your life is on the line every day, and I know that, and I appreciate it. And I think most people are oblivious to what you do because they don't need you, and that's a good thing. So I don't have as much to say as the City of Delafield, so mine is a little shorter and sweeter, but I would like to take a moment to read it. Whereas Eric Keel, Chief of Police for Delafield Police Department, is commemorated over 24 years of distinguished service, and whereas the position Chief of Police embodies an individual's commitment to public safety and the well-being of the community. And whereas Chief Keel has demonstrated the qualities of leadership and dedication throughout his career for fostering working relationships with his fellow officers, visiting schools to connect with students, and promoting positive interactions with the police in the community. Whereas Chief Keel will continue to dedicate his life to serving his community by teaching leadership at the University Lake School. Representative Cindy Dukow, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Assembly, with the concurrence of Senator Chris Cappella under Assembly Rule 97, hereby congratulate Eric Keel for his unrementing service to Lake Country community, and wishes him well in his retirement and future endeavors. Thank you, Eric. In every picture I have with that man, he's twice my size, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we will get back to the agenda. Number 5, Approval of Minutes of the following meetings, January 16, 2023.
Move to approve January 16 meeting minutes.
Can I start a discussion on that?
Sure.
Well, you need a second.
Second.
The January 16 agenda had erroneously referenced Section 1-110(c) as being the portion of the municipal code repealed by ordinance 812. The ordinance correctly referenced Section 2-110(c) of the code. The minutes have been updated to reflect the correct section of the code that was repealed by ordinance 812, both in the motion and the agenda language.
I will amend my motion to include that change.
Fantastic.
Second agree?
Yes.
Second.
I'm shocked I didn't catch it.
Always room for improvement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to B, January 23, 2023, Special Meeting.
That was a very brief agenda. I'll move to approve that one as well.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, we're moving on to number 6, City of Delafield's Citizens' Comments. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Mary Daniel. I live here in Delafield at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. This evening, I'd like to speak to something on the agenda, which is at the very, very end. It's number 12, The Report of City Officials, The Treasures Report. I see that the new one for the end of the year is up, and there are still a couple of active projects going back to 2007, which is the GIS system, which has a balance of 13,000-plus. In 2015, the City Hall steps, and I see on the agenda that there will be an update on that. 2017, there's the VMR signage, the Sangrid Trail, which has just under $4,000 sitting there. Also, 2017 is the building security for the Wells, which is about 2,000. 2019, the Gulf Road Improvement has 10,766.26. It's closed, but I'm wondering where that money went to. And also in 2019, there's a street paving for Mission Road Path. It's for the engineering, and that's $10,000. And I'm hoping that at the end of the meeting, we might know where that stuff is. So, thank you, and be safe.
Thank you for the comments. Who'd like to be next? Come on up.
Good evening. Sheri Dorf, 224 Muir Valley. Just following up from the last meeting, there was discussion about the Devonshire extension, the multi-use path. Couple things. And first off, I know it's noted that you guys are over budget. Sure, this doesn't matter for the paving project. I didn't know if we could extract the $40,000 that is going towards the Devonshire property, if that was a possibility. And also, I know it has, apparently, it's all approved, but also, would it be possible to have that $40,000 allocated to the Highway C project, which is definitely a safety issue? Like if there's, you know, to maybe extend that instead of doing the Devonshire. But if it must go through, I would also, I would, I do agree with some type of pavement or connection would be helpful for all the neighbors. And I'd like to work with the planners a little bit, our neighbors, like who are going to be directly impacted with that, to see if we could do a little bit more with permission of my neighbor to have it moved a little bit closer to their property, so I wouldn't lose all the trees that are literally, like I would lose all the trees there. So I just would like that to be open for consideration. And I think that's it. Oh, and actually, I do have a question, something regarding the multi-use path. I did look at the Delafield's Resources page, and on the resources page, there is a map that was dated October 27, 2021, and it shows that there are sidewalks being added to connect to the Lake Country Trail, and the Devonshire extension is listed on the map as a separated safety path, never listed in there as a multi-use path. So I feel like that's a little deceptive, because I had seen that once before, and I just wanted to know there was a way to discuss when that changed from the map that's posted online.
Great, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody else for Citizens' Comments? Anything on the agenda or off? All right, seeing none, Citizens' Comments are now closed. We'll move on to 7, The Consent Agenda. We have none. We'll move on to 8, Boards, Committees, and Commission Reports. A, Licenses. Do we have any? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to B, Planning Commission.
Okay, we've got several items here that I, for the majority of them, I will describe as kind of housecleaning topics. The first two are stormwater management agreements. Item 2A is for Delafield Family Dental, which is right on the, just north of the cemetery after you get off the expressway coming into town from the south. And so that is something that's been reviewed and is on the table for us to approve tonight. I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement for Delafield Family Dental.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Likewise, there's a stormwater maintenance agreement for Johnson Bank, which was, I believe, Open Pantry. I was going to say White Hen. That dates me. But so, Open Pantry, which is down as you get off the expressway heading east by across the street just north of the Quick Trip. Again, this is a stormwater maintenance agreement that was pretty routine and approved by staff, so I'll make a motion to approve that at this level.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
And per our state laws, we get to weigh in on extraterritorial survey maps for adjacent towns because we're a city, and there's several here that are listed, both, and I will make a motion for each of them independently, but they go C through F. They're all pretty much the same thing, where people are looking to, in most cases, combine lots, which is technically decreasing density or increasing the size of existing lots. And these were all approved by the Plan Commission over the past few months. Some of them go back a ways, but we'll act on them tonight. So, Item 2C, make a motion to approve tax code DELT 0780027 for the certified survey map.
Second. Danielle got it? All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
All right, Item 2D, tax key code number OCOT 05770123. Again, approval of an extraterritorial certified survey map to combine two lots that was previously approved by the Plan Commission in December. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. Oh, no, that was close. I'll give that one to Mark.
I'll take that one.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Okay, Item 2E, tax code DELT 0780017. Again, combining two lots for a certified survey map in the town of Delafield. I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Item 2F, tax code DELT 0810009 and DELT 0810010. Make a motion to approve the combination of those two lots in the town of Delafield.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Okay, Item 2G is for Clearview Homes, which is right here on Main Street, between Main and Milwaukee. We had a presentation and a request, an application to approve a conditional use amendment, including some signage to include a meeting hall and an outbuilding and some parking. And this was unanimously approved by the Plan Commission. And if anyone had seen any iterations or followed this story as it went along, there was, they contemplated having some housing that faced the Milwaukee Street on the south side of the street. They have removed that from their general plan for future site use. It's not saying they couldn't revisit that, but their current conditional use permit requested that they just add the outbuilding for a meeting facility and some extra parking and that. So this was embraced by the Plan Commission and voted unanimously, so I'll make a motion to approve this as well.
Okay, go ahead. I'll second it.
And also, for the record...
So who are we giving the second to?
Give it to Danielle.
I would say, it was a tie. There was, there was a citizen on the south side of the street who made a comment just describing that there was a light that bothered her, and the mayor volunteered to get a ladder and move it himself if they let him. So we expect that there'll be some sort of amicable deal struck up on that, so.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Really and truly, they've been wonderful neighbors, and I was at that meeting, and it was, you know, a temporary concern with a child at home ill. And yeah, they've always been wonderful Clearview neighbors, so.
Yes, agreed.
All righty. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
And our Plan Commission's next meeting is in two days. One of the items that's on there that should be of interest to people, actually two, it's some continuing plans and requests for approvals of the activities going on at the St. John's properties and the golf course. So there's a new, there's an updated concept plan for the golf course, as well as some final approvals for the places just north of Wisconsin.
Miller Marriott.
Miller Marriott approvals. So just look in the packet, and if you haven't signed up for it, sign up for notify me on our website to get these agenda items sent your way via email. It's a very innocuous way to find out what's going on. So that's all I have to say. End of report.
Wonderful. All righty, we will move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee. Mr. Price?
Yes, our February meeting was canceled, and we'll be meeting again in March.
Sounds good. D, Park and Rec?
Park and Rec, we welcome the new Commissioner Gloria Trnastic, who's replaced David Brabson, who recently retired. And one item of interest to everybody, University Lake School representatives came to the meeting, and they have a plan to open up their trails. They have 180 acres of woodland trails on their property that's currently only for use by students and their families. They want to open that up to Delafield residents, which would be a great recreational opportunity. They're simply asking that people sign up, sort of submit an application, and get a ID badge, so they know who belongs on the property and who doesn't. But I think it's a wonderful gesture on their part.
Yeah.
So, and that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All righty, E, Public Works, Mr. Grimmer?
Public Works had a meeting earlier this month, approved the 2023 Street Improvement Program, which included the Genesee Street path and the aforementioned Devonshire path. To clarify, on the Devonshire path, it was an eight-foot-wide path with additional signage put at the beginning of the path to kind of prohibit or decrease the likelihood of cars utilizing that path inadvertently. Public Works voted to vacate Smythe and Farron Lanes and the Miller Marriott project, which is, I believe, in our agenda later this evening to create more green space and walkways. And then lastly, there was a discussion on traffic calming, strategies for traffic calming. Some of the suggestions were rumble strips, diagonal stripes to give the appearance of a more narrow road, narrowing widths, painting speed limits on the actual pavement, and increasing pedestrian crosswalks to slow traffic. Public Works is discussing metrics, if any of those were implemented, discussing metrics on the effectiveness of any one of those particular interventions, how we would, how we might measure success or lack thereof.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Delahard, Story Cur.
All right, well, we, not a lot to report. We are continuing ahead with a plant upgrade that continues to decrease the amount of chemicals we're putting in to treat the water and increasing the amount of, you know, natural digestion, if you will, of the materials we have to deal with. As well, we're very fiscally sound. We'll have an audit coming up. As well, we're very fiscally sound, we'll have an audit coming up for last year, but all of them have shown progressively that we're in good shape. Also, we have one payment to make on our Clean Water Act loan that was taken out, I don't know, 20 something years ago. So, we will be unburdened by any debt or owing anybody for anything, other than the contracts we set up for to continue improving the plant. So, we're in good shape, and next meeting's in March.
Very good report, thank you. Police Commission, Ms. Valdi.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. So, other than the retirement of our chief, which we've all witnessed, there's no news. We will, I'm not sure when our next meeting is. Yeah, I don't think it's scheduled yet.
All right, sounds good. Delivery Board, Ms. Henry.
Yes, we met last week and went over the annual report. Good there. We also, there is an update for, just kind of an overview of what's going on in the library in your package. I believe we're going to continue to do that. And one of the main things is, right now, the winter reading program is going on, so if the community reads 75,000 minutes between February 13th and March 13th, we have sponsors that will be donating to the Kettlemorey Food Pantry. So you can log in on the website and log your minutes. It can be anything, from newspaper to books or audiobooks, anything, any minutes you can log.
Sounds good. Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't believe there was any meeting there. Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Schaefer.
No meeting.
No meeting. Okay. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, not aware of a meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We had a meeting on February 15th, a few items to report. The board did enter into a technical rescue agreement with the City of Waukesha, essentially an exchange of services whereby the city has, or the Lake Country Fire and Rescue has specialized dive capacity and capabilities. Waukesha, the City of Waukesha, has a special services team or SS team, which helps with confined space extrication, building collapse, things of that nature. And entered into a contract to essentially exchange those services. Previously, the, I believe, Waukesha, the City of Waukesha had, had to enroll and pay a fee for that service, but there are no annual fees under this agreement, it's just an exchange of services. Secondly, there is, continues to be a request from some board members regarding publishing, making public response times, one for, bless you.
Thank you.
One for clarity, one for openness, to be able to make a judgment on how an infusion of taxpayer dollars actually affects response times. So, there was a debate requesting that those response times be published on the website. There was significant concern and some resistance to that idea from other board members wondering how that data might be interpreted. No action was taken at that time, but that debate does continue, and we continue to look at metrics that can be used to compare 2022, 2023, and moving forward, so we can have an apples-to-apples comparison of how response times are affected by increased staffing. So we know, basically, is the money we're spending working to decrease those response There were four new hires out of seven, essentially eight, we did have someone quit, and Sandy, who many of you know, is retiring on May 26th. So if you do get the opportunity, if you do see Sandy, wish her, wish her well. That is it, I believe.
Matt, just a question, you're talking about response times, most of us are aware, we had a horrific accident on 16th Saturday. Was that, be able to get in the normal response time, or will be, was there any-
I don't think the response time was shared on that particular incident, other than the fact there was an additional call that happened, I think, seven or eight minutes into that response time. But I could ask the chief and see-
I was just curious if you hadn't heard that.
Nope, I had not. Or if I have, I don't recall.
Well, I appreciate you pushing the issue of metrics. It's something that we do in all departments within the city, it's something that every private business does. That's how you measure performance, that's how you measure if the inputs you're changing are delivering what your expectations are. So, hopefully with a little bit of time, the rest of the board will come online there, but that seems to be a very common sense, practical, open and transparent process for the Lake Country Fire and Rescue to want to embrace.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. I mean, I'd translate a very common example of that, that I think people can get their arms around, and that's when there's a new development, there's a request for a traffic study. There's an enormous amount of data that's generated, and then there's a summary report that talks about impact, that's like a page or two. We're never shy about sharing all that, so that if someone wants to dive in and try to extract a different net interpretation of the raw data, they can. However, it's going to lead them to the same conclusion that, that it should, the engineers come up with in their summary statements. But it's, it's a way to highlight exceptions and all these other things that people, you know, that do affect people. I think it's, I think it's important to have all that data just out there and open, and it's, it should be defendable, right? So, I, please keep it up.
And that transparency builds trust.
Exactly, I agree.
No further report.
All righty, we will move on to M, Other Committees Commissioning Reports. Can we change that on the agenda? I think the Dear Management Committee is now an official committee.
You can change.
We can talk about that afterwards, I just thought about it. All right, Dear Management Committee.
We have not met, we actually meet tomorrow, so.
Do you have any numbers for the end of the season report?
I don't yet, so.
All righty, sounds good. We'll move on to nine, unfinished business. Discussion and possible action regarding a decision on whether or not the city intends to pay to upgrade the future monotube traffic signal poles with the modification to have them painted black on the upcoming WDOT Highway 83 resurfacing project, currently scheduled for construction in 2025, but could get moved up to 2024. Mr. Hafner.
Yes, this is an issue that the council discussed a couple of months ago, and at that time, we didn't reach a decision, but the council's direction was to put the painting modification into the 2024 budget for consideration, and also contact the Village of Heartland to see if they would be interested in cost-sharing the local cost for this modification. Since then, very recently, the Department of Transportation has gotten back in touch with me and indicated that we do need to make a decision on this sooner rather than later. They indicated that we need a decision back to them by the end of March. The reason being is that they need to put together and execute a local agreement with the city if we want to move forward with this. And also, there's a 10- to 18-month lead time on ordering these poles. The DOT actually orders the poles well in advance of bidding the project out, and then just provides the poles to the contractor for their installation. So as a reminder, the DOT has identified that the local cost would be $10,000 per intersection to modify the monopoles with the black paint as opposed to the standard unpainted gray color. There's two intersections on the project, so we're talking about a $20,000 upgrade. And I contacted the Village of Heartland Administrator, he did take it to their board, and they indicated that they are not interested in participating in cost-sharing, or not interested in moving forward with the black painted poles. Furthermore, the DOT has identified that the city's obligation would continue going forward in the agreement, in that if there's ever a desire or a need to repaint the poles in the future, that'd be a city responsibility. And also, if a pole were to be knocked down, it would be the city's responsibility to replace that pole. That email just came from them today, so I'm not exactly sure how that would work, if there's a 10- to 18-month lead time on the poles, and they don't stock the poles. But it's something we would have to pursue further as we enter into an agreement with them, if the city still feels that there is reason to move forward with this modification.
I think it's a nice concept to think about, these black poles, but at the end of the day, all the poles on that road currently are traditional color, and it seems like the most common sense path is to move forward with that. My thoughts.
I will just add that there are representative pictures in the packet of the gray and the black poles.
I'd move that we go with the standard gray poles.
A second.
Wait a second.
Paul.
Yeah, I'll just say that I don't like the imposition of this design at all, but we, it is what it is, and spending money to pretty them up to be then saddled with the responsibility in the future isn't, it doesn't seem right. And if you, if anyone recalls, there was a cell phone tower right behind, between Walgreens and Kohl's that was painted black, looked good for 10 years, and then started feeling, and then it looked really bad for five, so. Just leave it, I'd say just leave it alone, they're ugly poles, let's leave them be ugly.
Yeah, I think, I agree.
And the, the gray poles blend in with the sky better than the black poles, they're a little less-
That's Lady Bird Johnson's idea.
Who's?
Lady Bird Johnson, our former first lady.
And, like you mentioned, there's six other poles on that stretch of road in Della Field, they're gray. We have two black ones and six gray ones, it's not very well coordinated.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, number 10, Mayor's Report. Mayor has no report. Number 11, New Business. A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Request by the City Assessor to Approve the Relief for Excessive Taxation for the Following Parcels. D E L C 0802-006001, D E L C 0787-045, and D E L C 0798-946013. Welcome, Mr. Assessor.
Hello. Hello. I'm here on behalf of the property owners, asking the council to approve the rescinded taxes for these three parcels. Two of the situations were errors that I made, where I've been told, told them that I would do an open book change, and I failed to make that change. And the third case was a gentleman that had an addition to the house that we assessed that he had never started building it, so. And these rescinded taxes are actually reported back to the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue makes an adjustment for the city, so there's a charge process.
I'll make a motion to, to request the City Assessor approve relief for excessive taxation on the parcels noted in 11A.
One second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those three citizens are very happy.
Wow.
All righty, 11B, Discussion and Possible Action on the Memorandum of Understanding Between Waukesha County Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Resource Center, Adult Protective Services Unit, and the City of Della Field Police Department in order to provide a coordinated, cooperative response to protect elder adults at risk and adults at risk.
Okay, thank you.
Soon to be chief.
Pretty straightforward memorandum of understanding with HHS. This is new to our county, however, the Adult Protective Services Unit can't share investigative information with us unless this memorandum is in place.
Oh, gotcha.
It's required by state statute. And so, this was reviewed by legal counsel, modifications made, and this is the final product that'll be agreed upon by all municipalities in the county with Adult Protective Services.
Should I take it the way we've been doing it in the past was not ideal or not working well?
It was a, very much a one-way street investigations. We could provide them information, but they could not provide us certain investigatory information that was confidential. With this, it remains confidential, but we are granted access to it.
Should I assume therefore makes it your, your team's ability to do a better job?
Yes, absolutely. And we've confirmed with the District Attorney's Office that items gathered in this way will be admissible in certain investigations that could be criminal in nature.
Makes a ton of sense. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Waukesha County DHHS, DHHS, and the City of Della Field Police Department.
One second.
Danielle? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 11C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding City Hall Steps and Repairing Them as Requested by Alderperson Valdi.
That would be me. I think it was pointed out at Citizens' Comments, it was approved in 2015, and I just think it's time that we make that repair. I think it, we approve the funds because it doesn't look, and it reflects poorly on us, and it's, it's long overdue. That's really all I want to know, is when, when we can get it done.
Yeah, just real quickly, as you, as you mentioned, the funds were approved in 2015, but after those were approved, the staff received direction from the past Merrill Administration, first of all, to attempt to identify who was at fault for what happened to the steps. We tried working with the contractor, the designer, and the contract management team before construction, construction inspection. That was, I mean, intermittently, that was a two-year effort, and it was not, it didn't yield any positive results. You know, the three parties involved were pretty much pointing the fingers at one another. The only thing we did get out of it is that the design team at Bray Architects, they did put together kind of a conceptual plan of what we could do to repair the steps. After those two years, we, the staff received direction to investigate our legal options, and again, intermittently, we took, spent a year or two on working on that with our city attorneys, trying to identify what kind of case we would have, and it, you know, it turned out that we really couldn't point, point the fingers that specifically, was it a design error, was it a construction error, was it something that was missed in construction inspection? And we got to the point in 2019 where we did start to move forward on putting together kind of a scope of services and identifying what we wanted the project to look like. We pursued a consensus-type design that involved our, our fire department to make sure that anything we did didn't affect their access. Our library department was consulted, our Public Works Department was consulted, and there was a lot of competing interests in what people wanted to see. And at the same time, construction costs were- And at the same time, construction costs were rising significantly, and it became obvious that $65,000 was no longer satisfactory. And some of the types of things that people were looking for is like our public works department, as you're aware, significantly understaffed, and one thing they asked for is hydraulic heat in the steps. It's a significant effort to shovel those steps during the winter. So those are the types of things that we were starting to look at. But at this point in time, I agree, it's long overdue, it looks poor, and what I want to do and what I intend to do is put together a scope of services for our city engineer. The types of things that we're talking about now does require a professional design, you know, it needs to be properly designed structurally with regards to reinforcing bars and whatnot. And then we'll look at the different options as far as layouts and trying to decrease the size of the steps. One thought in the past was that instead of having one very expansive stairway up, that maybe we would put an area of landscaping in between, and have one row of steps up and one row down. An alternative would be to have two rows of landscaping and just one smaller step in between, things like that. So to come to a consensus, the scope of services that I'm envisioning would involve putting together a few different alternatives as far as conceptual alternatives, taking them to our planning commission, and allowing our planning commission to be the ones to make a final decision and provide us a direction forward. And then, like I said, I do anticipate that we probably will have to come back and talk about funding as far as the existing budget and its adequacy. So it is a priority this year. It's one of the things that we did talk about in my performance evaluation and how it rates with regards to other priorities, but it is something that we're looking to work towards this year. Any other questions?
I remember some of those discussions in the past. Now that you, you know, trace the history, I remember some of those discussions about the whose fault is it and how can we remediate it? And yeah, I just think at this point, we had this little thing like a global pandemic, you know, a few things have kind of gotten away. But yeah, I think it is time, and I think, yeah, it would be good to sort of make that direction.
Very good.
Not that it was a solution of any kind, but a few years back, we did have all the lights removed, which was causing the rust stains. Then we sandblasted and did some chemical treatment to try to minimize those rusts, and then we patched, again, not a perfect solution, but it at least made it look a little bit better than it did before.
It wasn't quite so.
That's all the progress we've made.
I'd suggest, in that unlikelihood that there's those 25 man-hours available, do that again this year.
Those patches are popping out.
I know, so I mean, they need to be redone, it's whatever patch. But yeah, concrete doesn't get along with concrete sometimes. But I think the second Band-Aid would work when we've got time, because what you just suggested is something that is going to happen July of 2024, and we're going to look at that all summer again. So it does look like those steps were designed by someone who didn't think about snow removal. Their arch steps are four inches high.
In front of the shower.
Anyway.
Even just having the posts, vertical posts down into the concrete, it's problematic for the people that have to maintain that.
But yeah, that sandblasting, it looked better, not great, looked better for a couple of years, I think. Let's do that again, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we all set on that one? We'll move on to C, discussion of possible action regarding, oh, I'd say we already did that one. D, discussion of possible action regarding the Public Works Committee's street improvement plan costs, wherein the common council approved a budget for this item for 2023, and the proposal exceeded the budget amount as requested by Alder Personfaldy.
Very pesky this week, aren't they?
Two in a row.
If you look on the e-packet on page 115, it does show that the all-in project costs with engineering and inspection, which I'm going to guess are essential to doing a construction project. You can't pave the roads without knowing how to do that, is $991,000 and some extra costs above that. So it's more than $91,000 over the budget. My concern is that we're sort of pushing forward, like at Citizens Comments was mentioned about the Devonshire path, and that is on page 114, if you just go back one page, it's There have been some suggestions at the public hearing to make the path less wide, and in talking to some of the folks there who live on Devonshire, the suggestion too was to work with them to even moderate the direction of the path to mitigate the tree destruction, which I think we all want to avoid that, just for the aesthetics alone and the health of the whole area and the property values, because we know trees, mature trees add value. So I guess what I'm wondering is, I know when we put out an RFP, especially in recent years, often the proposals that come in are even more expensive. Bear witness to dredging, that was quite expensive, and some other projects, they come back. So what we're budgeting is over what we budgeted, and that's just what we're asking for the proposals. They can come in at more, and I'm wondering how we square that. It's not, it's not very fiscally prudent, I guess is, so I'm wondering how we can. I know it was approved by the public works, so maybe we can discuss what was the mindset regarding that.
Regarding Devonshire?
Requiring, or just overall, being over budget.
Matt, can I start?
Sure.
Yeah, so Jackie, you mentioned like page 115, and that was the cost estimate in January.
Mm-hmm.
Then the next few pages, 116, 117, 118, is a refined cost estimate that was at the, in the February packet for Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
And the most significant difference is that Milwaukee Street and Dopkin Street were removed from the project.
Were what kind?
What was that?
What'd you say, they were what kind of projects?
They were removed from the project.
Oh, removed, gotcha.
Because it's become evident that, those were supposed to be done when 705 Genesee Street construction was completed. We don't want to pave that and still have construction traffic utilizing those roads. So it's become obvious that that construction is behind schedule, and so those were removed, and that does currently bring us within budget.
So, okay, wait, on page 114, it has the annual road program, is that what you're referencing, or are you looking at?
118.
So you removed the Devonshire path from the project?
Nope.
No?
Moved Dopkin Street and Milwaukee Street.
Okay. Why Dopkins and Milwaukee, because they're not ready?
Because 705 Genesee Street construction is not going to be finished in time, and those are intended to be done after that construction is complete.
Okay. Can, I know in the, I was at the Public Works public hearing, and the, or excuse me, the Devonshire path was referenced as being eight-foot wide, but in the RFP, it's 10-foot wide. So is that, what's the story there, and is there possibility to work with the residents in the, in question who are directly impacted by this path?
Now, I'm at a disadvantage now. We did have the public informational meeting at the last Public Works Committee meeting, and I was ill that evening and not there. Matt, do you recall that conversation?
Yeah, I can comment on some accommodations that were made. Obviously, there were concerns about the path in general and a homeowner's proximity or objection to the path. I recall that two things were addressed at Public Works, which was adding signage to the entrance of that particular path to decrease the likelihood of motor vehicles, assuming that's an extension of the roadway.
Because it's right out of curve.
Yep. And then reinforcing that it is an eight-foot path and not a 10-foot path, again, to save trees, make it less impact on that particular area. An eight-foot path is the minimum for what's considered a multi-use path.
Okay, it says 10 on the.
Jack, you will see that in the January packet, it says 10 feet, and then on the February packet, page 117, I think, it says eight feet. So it did get, that did get adjusted.
I'm, which page?
118.
Yeah, there are a lot of pages, and for people who do this, that's your job, you know what you're doing. But when I get it, I read, and I, you know, I spend a fair amount of time when I get a packet, reading these things, and it's not always clear to me which one sticks, and I've been doing this for 10 years, so.
Well, the main point is there's two packets, one from January, one from February. And as you pointed out, the budget was over in January, and then the Public Works Committee made adjustments and brought it within budget, and we'll see where the bids do come in.
Mm-hmm. I guess my follow-up question will be on the Devonshire path from the City of Dellafield has a resource page that has that path being designated as a safety path, not a multi-use path. I'm just wondering why we're keen on doing that since there's already a trail there so close, and if we can at least move it so that we don't have the tree destruction. Is that something we're willing to do as a city?
So our city engineer indicated that he worked with the property owner to the west because there is a natural clearing that people have been using for years, where there is very little tree growth and tree disturbance. But in order to follow that path, it butts right up against the property to the west, and so my understanding is that property to the west did give the permission to not put the path onto their property, but put it right up to their property and do some grading onto their property.
Are you the property owner, is the property owner here?
But Jackie, this is for the common council.
All right, well, it's just, yeah. It's hard to have a conversation when I don't know everything, and so it's just a little frustrating, that's all.
I think if they wanted to, the council could invite someone from the audience to participate in the discussion.
I would love it, I don't have that power. And the mayor just said this was for the common council, which indicates he doesn't It seems like a very small request, and.
So for my benefit, we're talking about a path that has gone from 10 feet to eight feet, from initial plans to what's approved. Is this all currently on public right-of-way? Is this all in city public right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, I'm not sure what the, I just, what are, what is it that you're asking?
Tom was giving a summary, and the two property owners in questions are sitting here. And I asked if they could come up, and Kent said, no, it's just for the common council. So I'm.
What information are you looking to get from them?
If they did indeed move the path, or if we could move the path to minimize tree destruction.
I would suggest that's something we'd need to talk to Public Works or the city engineer about, Jackie. They're the ones that would have the facts.
How, when are bids coming in on this? Is this out to bid right now?
It's out to bid right now.
And so bids come in, and then we approve the money, right, in April or March?
It could be, could be in March, March, April.
All right. So there's our last kick, right? Kent, is approving the money for this based on whether or not the property owners are happy or not in total objection to it, right, at that point?
The property owners seem very cooperative, they're not saying absolutely, no, we don't want it, we're fighting it, they're saying, can we tweak it? And I know that our city engineer did meet with the property owners, and I'm just seeking clarification.
And again, what the city engineer communicated to me is that the existing clearing, the clearing that exists today that people have been using as a dirt trail, it actually slightly goes off of the city right-of-way onto the property to the west, which is the Merrick property. And he consulted with the Merricks and asked if we could follow that and get an easement to put the path just slightly onto their property. And my understanding, secondhand, is that the Merricks preferred that the path not come onto their property, but that they were okay with some slight grading on their property so that the path could be right up against their property, as close to their property as possible. So it does largely follow the existing natural clearing and does minimize the tree clearing required to put this in as compared to if we went down the center of the city's right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And that often requires a construction easement, assuming what Tom is saying is correct. It's something we've done on several path installations when we work cooperatively with adjacent homeowners.
Does he have a phrase for that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. We will move on to 11E, discussion of possible action regarding funding of support services for the 2023 Liberty Park Entertainment Series as requested by Alder Person Shaffer.
As you know, we previously approved a $50,000 in the budget to support a performance stage at Liberty Park, and we've used $15,000, approximately $15,000 of that. We've committed to building a temporary stage, renting a temporary stage for a 2023 performance series. The Dellafield Arts Foundation has a schedule of six performances from June 16 through August 12. They've contracted with three, what I would call regional acts, or larger acts, June 16, July 21, and August 12. And then they're going to, they're working on more of a local performers for three additional performances in that timeframe. So the planning is well underway. The one other support piece that this really needs is electrical, which is typically provided by Lyons Electric to run the electrical service, and also porta potties for our crowds. We've got quotes for that work based on past performances that the Arts Foundation has sponsored. Tom Hafner looked at that and went to our usual city supplier of porta potties and found some significant cost savings, and they would be installed, they would just be left there, they wouldn't be coming in and out for each performance. The electrical would have to be provided for each performance. Total cost for that would be 40, I would say about $4,700, depending on how many porta potties we need, and part of that is the learning experience with the crowd size we need. So maybe a little more than that. I would like to move that we authorize not more than $6,000 of our funding to pay for any necessary porta potties and electrical service for the 2023 Liberty Park Entertainment Series.
I'll second for discussion. So what was, what was included in the budget for this year?
$50,000, and we've committed $15,000 of that for the rental of the stage.
Just as a reminder, it was $50,000 intended to do conceptual design of a permanent stage, but then the council instead approved using approximately $15,000 of that for the stage intent rental for the. stage intent rental for this year.
And what do we get for the 6,000? You get, you get all five or six hookups paid for.
Six times.
Okay.
And porta potties continuously through the eight-week stretch. And that's the six events that are planned. And that's, that's where we're at and not intending to go anymore. There's a, there's a block party is in there, so there's a gap. You know, we're not trying to, we need to avoid that. But six, six events over eight weeks. And that pretty much covers anything. You know, that's the last of the costs that we would incur. Any performer costs are being.
Is there DPW set up and breakdown in police? For 300 or 500 people, I'm assuming, we, police are maybe adjusting a shift to concentrate on it or something. But those are.
Haven't discussed that, but I assume there would be garbage cans that Public Works will probably have to service.
So each time they have to pull an event permit. And Molly can speak to the specific details on that. And in that, you request services. And depending upon the services you request, whether some are charged and some are included with your, basically your application fee, depends upon the extent of the labor required. But porta potties and electrical power and setting things up like that are typically the responsibility of the person throwing the event.
We've, I'm trying to draw a parallel to other things that we've done. We've waived fish hatchery fees for certain organizations that have a direct benefit for the city or are seeking to provide a direct benefit for the city. This is, I guess, similar in that vein in subsidizing an entity who is providing a public good. This tent is a, you know, this is kind of a trial idea to see what the interest is, what the, how many people it brings in, things of that nature, and see if a temporary stage, the tent is adequate or if a bigger investment by the city needs to take place. I guess I don't necessarily object to this year, but not necessarily on an ongoing basis. I would obviously want to look at it year by year and see how Liberty Park is, is evolving and how a stage or maybe not a stage fits into that based on how they do this year and maybe next year.
And since previous discussion was around a permanent stage.
Right.
Much costlier, more permanent impact to the city. This is our low-cost test and learning experience. I want to make sure it's, it's fair and valid, right? That we're not, we're not handicapping our, our, our test here out of the gate.
Can I, this is the $50,000 that, in capital that we approved, right? This is, okay, so I'm having a, I guess I'm having a hard time seeing how that is, how these are capital expensive.
I don't know that they are.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's.
I was there, yeah, I don't know that.
We made that, the tent that we were, it was the trial for the cap, I mean, that was, so that made sense to me to do that, but I have a hard time if we're now we're extending that to operating expenses with this.
But it doesn't necessarily have to come from that capital.
I don't know. What, what con are we going to find?
What is it, five years and?
Just a quick question.
$5,000?
Just a quick question. Who's throwing these events? Is it exclusively the Arts Foundation or is this a partnership between the city and the Arts Foundation?
I would call it a partnership since the longer, long-term impact is, is important, is probably more important to us than it is the Arts Foundation.
So do we have an operating budget for events like this?
No.
You know, that would, wouldn't promotion or, are there other entities that could support the Arts Foundation?
They could.
Promotion tourism.
Promotion and tourism and ask for.
Yeah.
My, my thought is that if we end up getting a stage and they're, these are going to be operating expenses that are going to continue. I mean, we're going to continue to have these operating expenses, so.
Well, if you have a stage, you're gonna.
You may or may not have restrooms.
You may or may not have restrooms. You will have electrical.
You probably would have.
You probably should.
But if you don't have the restrooms, then you're having.
But you may not have restrooms.
Or changing rooms or.
Better have restrooms of some sort.
But yeah, if you don't have the restrooms, then you're having the continued porta potty operating expenses. I just, I, I have a hard time with this just because that money is supposed to be, and hopefully still going to be moving forward on the stage project. I have a hard time taking more money from the capital investment that we've agreed to do to pay for operating expenses.
Think of it as a design and feasibility phase of.
It's a proof, it's a proof of concept.
We need this, we need this to, really to sensibly design any, any stage in that location.
So where would the money come from if this is defined as like you described it, Mark, like a proof of concept? Is that, is that actually like an engineering survey to judge a crowd and performance capacity on a site? Would that, is that actually fit the bill for a capital expenditure for a design? Can we rationalize that in an accounting sense? Because if we can't.
You can fund a study under, in capital.
Wouldn't this be a proof of concept study for a season? Have it just defined as that?
If we're working on it with an architect, we would probably expect them to.
I know it's a stretch.
It's a stretch when you're renting a tent and stage and porta potties and.
I don't understand. But you're, you're, it's, it's a more, it's, frankly, it's a more practical trial run than some other ones that we've had where you're dealing with 500 people coming and going from a site and seeing if it works.
The fact of the matter is, in the current levy limit environment, it's become extremely common amongst municipalities to fund all kinds of things out of capital that are traditionally funded in the operating budget just because they've got no other way to, to maintain the status quo and maintain existing levels of services and staffing.
If we don't do this as a feasibility, as a learning experience, as a design study, let's call it, and we'd move ahead with a permanent stage, I think, we'd be penny wise and very risky. I think this is money well spent before we even talk about a permanent anything.
I could see how it could make sense from a proof of concept and limiting it to one year. I know it's a stretch, but I, at least in my mind, I, I see some, I think I, in my own opinion, I think I see just enough logic to make sense.
I can support it for this year, but yeah, just enough for this year, right? And then there are more appropriate funding sources. But again, we'll see how successful it is.
And that's, that's another benefit that we've talked about with the Arts Foundation is they, they need to use this as a fundraising tool, sponsorship tool.
And just real quickly, when you talk about pursuing funding from promotion and tourism, the time to do that isn't now. The, the time to do that for 2024 would be like in May or June of this year. Before they start setting their budget so that they can incorporate that and they can weigh it against, they get requests from other entities for similar types of donations and, and then they can weigh those against their other requests and make, make decisions.
This is coming out of Park and Rec, right? Or where is this?
No, this is, no. This was a, the $50,000 for Liberty Park.
No, I mean, it's based on, it's coming from a Park and Rec.
Was it discussed at Park and Rec?
Correct? No?
No.
Just from the outside.
Yeah.
No, but who's requesting it?
Was it debated?
Who's requesting this money?
For the support.
Like who is asking that we allocate this money for this?
I am.
You personally?
Yes.
Not Park and Rec.
Correct. District two Alder Person, not Park and Rec representative.
If we originally funded the 50,000 for the permanent stage and we're going to run this down to 35, and if we like it, how are we going to build the stage?
15 plus six.
15 plus six, okay. So are we going to be real short then if we decide to build the permanent stage? We got to fund another 20 to get back to the 50 or not?
A good question. I don't think we know the answer to it. The council decided to spend the money on the tent idea under this onus that we've been discussing, proof of concept. Why do we want to spend all this money from the capital budget to design a stage unless we really know if we're capable of, of supporting such a stage? So this became Plan B from the original approval.
Okay.
So where did all these numbers come from for the porta, like who came up with the, the numbers that we need for this? Where did those come from?
The 50,000?
No, the porta potties and the, like who, who, who says that, where is this coming from that we, that there is a need for this money?
It's quotes from Lyons Electric, which they, they have done this in the past.
Who requested, who requested the quotes?
Jim Reyer.
From the Dellafield Arts.
From the Dellafield Arts. They've done these performances for the past few summers. They've paid for the electrical hookup, they've played for the porta potties, they know what the costs are.
And are they requesting that the city pay this?
This is based on their past, their past events. And then Tom found a lower cost alternative for the porta potties.
Mark, I think what Daniel's asking, did, did Jim Reyer or the Arts Foundation ask you to pursue funding this?
No. This is, this is my idea based on, they're doing what they're good at, right? They're providing performers and, and designing a, designing a performance series, putting together the infrastructure to support it and whatnot is, is our, our expertise.
Yeah, and to Mark's, not, not that you need defense, but to Mark's point, having worked with the Arts Foundation, a lot of effort goes into the coordination of setup and it takes a lot of man-hours to do that. And that is not their specialty. They're, they should be about the talent, about, you know, putting these performances on, not the, the backend, I guess, of porta potties and electrical and things like that. But.
This is also a seed for fundraising.
Bottom line, if we're going to provide an entertainment series free of charge to our residents, it costs money and who's going to pay for it?
Yeah. Yeah, this is not something anybody's envisioned charging for. We don't have a facility that we can charge, right? You can't crowd control to, this is the kind of thing that should be a, a free, free for the community.
Where's this come from before? I mean, who's funded these projects?
The Arts Foundation funded it out of their revenue from the specific events.
Okay, and, and they're not, they're out, but they're not able to do that going forward?
I don't know. I haven't been involved with them in about three years.
At this time, it looks like they're spending the budget on the acts themselves, the full budget that they have. They're doing a, they're doing a fundraiser in May, but I think their budget's going to be, go totally towards hiring the acts, the performers.
I was under the impression that this was something spearheaded or coordinated by Park and Rec. There's a litany of private charitable organizations looking for funding for entertainment and event schedules this summer. Got a couple I could bring up right now and I'm not gonna because I don't think it's appropriate for us to fund these with taxpayers' money when they can, their door can be knocked on and they can get the money. If, if it's not their expertise to provide the labor to provide these services, they should provide the volunteer effort and the outreach to get the money from people that are willing to give it. And so I, fundamental disagreement that this is a city-funded effort. Although I think a cooperative effort like we signed up for to investigate a stage as a, as a citywide amenity is a good idea. I think sponsoring particular entertainment events isn't really our bailiwick, just like our fireworks is a privately funded and charitable donation type event. I think this falls in the same category personally.
I agree with that as well.
I feel bad, I'm going back, I'm going back to the first year I was in council. I told a little boy that we wouldn't match his $100 to go to the Badger State games that the Lions Club was giving him because he could go knock on 10 doors and get it in about an hour. So I'm just, I feel this kind of the same way about this.
When I stepped into this role, there was talk about seven-figure budgets to build a stage and it totally freaked me out. It was like, that's a lot of money. We're talking about the $6,000 here to test it. People were ready to talk about millions of dollars. And I think this is, this is, should be an easy decision to really test the waters before we, before we even talk about a permanent stage and this.
I was at Pat McCurdy last fall. It was a great event. I mean, it's something to build on and we didn't pay for that. Just, I'm, I don't mean to be flippant about it, but so I just kind of said my piece. You got a good point.
One of the things that came up on the Economic Development Council discussion where one of the things, it was a survey amongst the members and then put out to the public about what they love and what they would love to see more of in the city of Dellafield. And one of the things that was very loud and clear was they loved the events, the block party and the art walk and the like. And so to me, this is exactly what people said they wanted. I'm not suggesting how to pay for it. I'm just saying that I don't think we want to divorce ourselves from being involved with the arts or the performing arts because I think it is a part of what makes a city unique and a draw. So I don't know the total amount that you, that is needed, but I think we, we should consider it because I think, as Mark pointed out, it will genuinely help us make a more educated decision about what sort of stage or venue design would work versus just build blind and see what happens. But that came out of the economic development.
It is an important dimension of a, of a community and it's not a Dellafield strength. Want to look around, we can point to neighboring communities that do, that are much stronger in that, in that aspect. I think this is a good, a good test, a low-cost test before we do anything permanent, before we even discuss whether, you know, we don't, we don't know whether citizens are going to support this, whether they're interested, whether we can do this, whether that's a good location. This is a low-cost way of learning all of that with some confidence.
All righty, is there any more discussion? Are we all clear on what the motion is? Anybody need clarification on the motion?
The motion is to approve the funding of $6,000 for porta potties and electrical hookup up to. Thank you.
Up to, thank you.
All right. Hearing no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes.
To clarify, that was Siker and Henry on the nay. Didn't miss them.
We're moving on to F. Introduction of Resolution Number 2023-04, a resolution of the Common Council to vacate and discontinue a portion of public right-of-way for Smythe Lane and Farren Lane. Referral of the matter to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation of the Common Council pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 62.235, and set the date for public hearing on the resolution at least 40 days after the date of introduction. Tom?
Yeah, as per my memo in the packet, this vacation is intended to accommodate the proposed Beacon Hill subdivision, which is on the current St. John's campus, the block just north of St. John's Drive, and it's intended to vacate the portion of Smythe Lane and Farren Lane between St. John's Road and Wisconsin Avenue. And what the intention is, is to eliminate the road along that portion of the right-of-way, and instead put in sidewalks that would meander through a landscaped area that would have some subtle bollard lightings. And there is drawings in your packet showing how that landscaping would be laid out, what those bollards would look like. And to accomplish this, there is a detailed process involved, and the step that we're at right now of that process is to just introduce the resolution that's in the packet tonight, take no action, but just introduce it, and then refer the matter to the Plan Commission for consideration and recommendation back to the Common Council, and staff is recommending that that be referred to Plan Commission for the March 29th agenda. And then lastly, an action item to set a date for a public hearing. That public hearing will be here at the Common Council, and that's going to be at least 40 days after today, and so the recommendation is to set a public hearing date of April 17th of 2023. Any questions on that?
So we need to refer it to Plan Commission and set up public hearing is what the process is.
Correct.
I'll move to do just that.
I don't think we need a motion, is that correct?
No, we do.
Oh, you do.
So the action item, two action items, they can be combined in one if, as per Tim's motion, but perhaps you'd want to mention, refer to Plan Commission on March 29th, and specifically set the public hearing for April 17th.
That is what I'll do. Refer to, I'll refer this matter to the Plan Commission, Resolution 2023-04, for March 20.
9th.
I'm sorry, March 29th?
Yep.
And set the public hearing for April.
17th.
17th.
I'll second that motion.
And if, between now and then, it'd be nice if we had some precedence on where we vacated other roads. I mean, I can help come up with some of those, but I know we've, we've done it in the last decade or so at St. John's for some development they had where we.
Right next to Well Street Tavern.
Yeah, we had no interest in that property anymore, and Dopkins Street by Well Street's Tavern, where we took a, kind of a muddy parking spot, turned it into a wide public access to the public parking area.
And at one, cost savings, what would it take if we had to repave those?
The roads, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Very similar to Dopkins Street, with the installation of a path, which increases neighborhood connectivity, and in that case, access to the public parking lot.
And I'm sure the Plan Commission report will come back with ideas about how it may or may not benefit the proposed subdivision, the Millamariet subdivision, as far as setbacks and other things.
All I have to say is, this is so pretty.
What is it?
Those are the nightscapes.
They're gorgeous, don't you think? Oh my God, I'm like, oh.
As they melt the snow.
The landscaping plan too, it's very well done.
So pretty.
That's the same thought I had, Jackie, when I saw that light in the back.
They're gorgeous, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to G. Approval of the vouchers payable report.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to 12. Reports to city officials. A, Mr. City Administrator.
Yeah, one update that's on the agenda, and that is the, we received the notice from the county that they do intend to pave one of the county roads in the city this year. That would be County Trunk Highway R, which is also East Wisconsin Avenue. That's the frontage road on the north side of Highway 16 up there. So that is on their list to be paved this year. The only possibility that would possibly change that is they will be getting bids in late March or early April. If by chance their bids come in over budget, they would have to adjust their, their list somewhat, and it's possible one road could get eliminated, and that would get pushed to the next year then. So just an update that we are anticipating that road being repaved this year. And then one other thing that came in after the agenda went out is we did receive notification from the DNR that our permit application for the St. John's Bay Boat Dock is now considered complete. They indicated that there has been a public hearing requested, and so we're currently working with the DNR to schedule that public hearing. It's looking like it'll be sometime in March. They have indicated that they are still conducting all their public hearings by Zoom, and that they typically do them in the late afternoon, typically about 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. So as soon as I know the final date on that, I can report that definitely at the next meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, City Clerk.
There is a spring primary election tomorrow morning, starting full open at 7:00. As of when I was writing this report, or putting the agenda together on the 16th of February, there were 326 absentee ballots returned, and 115 of those were in-person So we're rolling, everything's all set up there, and we're excited to have another smooth and efficient election with our Badger books. Oh, we did get our printers for Badger books, which I was really worried about, more so for next election, but that was kind of the one thing that we were waiting on as far as supplies went, so we're going to get those rolling and set up for this one to make sure they're working correctly, and be all ready for the next one. I provided everybody, moving on to actually the April election, I provided everybody with a sample. It came in just maybe Friday afternoon, the sample ballots for the April election, just for review, especially regarding the referendum question. I know there was concern that it was going to be more than a column. As you can see, based on the ballots here, it's going to be on the back page, I think, of most of these. It's about just over a half of a column long. It doesn't spill over, and the Oconomowoc School District appears to be remaining at a single ballot, so that, that's what we would expect to see. The other item I have, if you recall, during the redistricting process, we noticed there was a discrepancy in the St. John's population count, and I have started working on getting that submittal rolling so that we can go through the formal, it's the residential kind of re-review. It's specific to the housing facilities that they opened because there was such an issue with the reporting of the population counts being off. In my research, I did discover that St. John's is a unique situation, so I'm not as confident that we will come out with a increased population as I was when I had initially kind of started the process, but nobody could give me a determination on whether or not this particular residential facility would qualify without me submitting the paperwork. So once we get that submitted, they'll make the determination, and we'll find out if we get those extra bodies. It would be based on what St. John's had provided me, 200 and some odd students, if we were to get those back.
Would that mean we get an extra liquor license?
Um.
Cause this is a 1,000. There's really of that.
So.
That's kind of a deal.
I would say.
I thought we were close on census.
There is the probability that we would, however, when the census count came in, we were at 7,185, and when the Department of Administration sent the new updated census, we went down maybe 10 bodies or something along those lines, and I asked them what the reasoning for that was, and they had noted that there is a downward trend in population, but then at the alternative is that we're also developing, so I, I don't want to, we are very, very, very close. I would hope that 200 would give us that, but I don't know. It's all about the up and down of it.
Thank you.
That's what students are for.
So that is all I have for today, and I will hopefully see those of you that didn't do the early in-person absentee or absentee voting tomorrow.
Sounds good. All right, we'll move on to 10C. City Treasurer, refer you to the December 2022 Treasurer's Report in the packet, and then we'll move on to 12D. Council request for future agenda items. Anybody got one now? Otherwise, reach out to staff before the next meeting. All right. Again, also refer you to correspondence in the packet, and seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:37.